All right, good morning. We're gonna go ahead and get Board of Supervisors. We'll start this meeting like we always do with the invocation and the pledge. And the clerk of the board, Fran McCarron, has been so kind as to lead us in boat today. Fran, thank you. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, your word tells us to come into your presence with Thanksgiving. And Lord, we are so thankful for your blessings. For the rain to quench the fires, for the men and women who work here at Maricopa County to serve all of the residents with integrity, for the men and women that serve daily in so many capacities to preserve our freedoms. We ask that your blessings of wisdom be upon all of the leaders in our city, county, state, and at the national level. We thank you that you would guide them as they are faced daily with decisions that affect our lives. And most of all, we are thankful that you are a trustworthy God. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fran, thank you so much for those words. And we are very grateful for the rains, both here and also in northern Arizona recently. And we're gonna put you right back to work, Fran. If you could please call the roll for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers?
Here.
Supervisor Chukri?
Here.
Supervisor Hickman?
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Here.
And Chairman Gates.
Here. Thank you very much. We're excited, as always, to see that we're joined today by Jose Santiago from the Maricopa County Animal Care and Control and a friend. Good morning.
Good morning. We have Aspen here today.
Ooh.
And she is one of our senior gals at the shelter. She's about nine years old, but we gave her a little Botox, so she's looking okay. But we're doing a lot of focus recently on some of the senior guys and gals and the long timers at the shelter. They simply get overlooked because of their outward appearance or sometimes their age, and they're still perfectly healthy and capable of being adopted out into a loving home. And so a lot of these are offered at a reduced rate, or if not, a fee waived adoption fee. And Aspen is available, ready to go. And we think that she should live her golden years in somebody's lap and not in the shelter environment. So this is little Aspen.
Well, thanks for bringing Aspen as someone with two senior dogs at home. Very, very happy to see that you're featuring your senior pets. And again, as always, thanks for all that you guys do. I know that there are always a lot of challenges, and we just appreciate everything you do over there. Thanks so much, Jose. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements or corrections to the agenda today?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just one quick announcement. On pages thirty-five and thirty-six, you'll see that items number fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three are lined out in your agenda. The department asked that those be possibly pushed to the next meeting, but it was after we had printed, so they're lined out here. That's actually the only correction I believe I have.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And we appreciate that. Next, we come to item five, which is a proclamation for Child Support Awareness Month. And again, you're on again, Fran, if you would be...
Oh.
The Fran Show.
...meeting. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a proclamation regarding Child Support Awareness Month, to proclaim it August 2019. Whereas Maricopa County desires to join the state of Arizona and the nation in recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month, and whereas a child who receives emotional and financial support is more likely to feel safe and secure and is better equipped with the courage to be their very best in life, and whereas the Department of Economic Security, Division of Child Support Services, is committed to serving Arizonans with excellence, respect, integrity, and kindness, and whereas the Child Support Services Division is a strong advocate for shared parenting responsibilities, realizing the benefits of both parents, regardless of marital status, being engaged with their child at every stage of growth, and whereas strengthening individuals and families and an emphasis on fiscal responsibility promotes the safety and well-being of children, and whereas the Child Support Awareness Month salutes diligent parents who spend time with their children and who make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future, now therefore, the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of August 2019 as Child Support Awareness Month.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any comments or a motion from any of my colleagues? I'll make a motion to approve this item, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I was trying to think of some smart aleck remark that didn't come to mind past now. Thank you. Thank you very much, Supervisor Chukri. Do we have a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be honored to make a second. If you talk to the courts or even the clerk's office, clerk of the board, or clerk of the courts, you know, it's one of the biggest issues that they deal with, of course, is child support. And it's a responsibility that everybody has to take care of their young ones. And I think it's a shared responsibility. We all have a responsibility to take care of our young ones. And this is a very important issue. And we gotta continue to remind folks the importance of it, and particularly those mothers or fathers that are in this situation where they're having to provide. And so we may make a little joke here and there about it, but it is definitely an important issue that we gotta continue to bring awareness about.
Thank you very much. Well said. Any other comments from my colleagues? I'm very pleased to see that this is coming before the board and that this board will be following the lead of Governor Ducey in proclaiming August as Child Support Month. Again, very, very important issue in our community. And we do, that's right. As Maricopa County and our courts, there's a lot of people who work hard to make sure that people are paying the child support that they're required to pay, so that our young people have the resources that they need to get a great start in life. So with that, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to planning and zoning, the consent agenda. We have one item, PZ-1, which is the I-10 and Citrus IUPD. And do we have any comments at all from our planning and development staff? All right, any questions from the board? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve item PZ-1.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Hickman, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Next, we move into statutory hearings under the clerk of the board, number six, liquor license applications A through C, our new license for Dolly Steamboat, Pizza Hut, number 26992, and Shiprock at Swarro Lake. We have D, which is an owner transfer for Shiprock at Swarro Lake. And then E is a permanent extension of premises patio for Superstition Manor Wedding and Event Center. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone here to speak on these items?
I have no slips, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then, at this time, the board will consider item six, A through E.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Under the clerk of the board, we have seven, which is petitions hearing for the formation of the proposed law Celesta Irrigation Water Delivery District. And we have eight, which is petition hearing for the formation of the proposed Ardena Estates Irrigation Water Delivery District. Under transportation, nine, A through AE, these are road files as listed on the agenda. And then under environmental, we have ten, which is Maricopa County Transfer Station Fee Revisions. Do we have anyone here, madam clerk, to speak on items seven through ten?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, okay. Well, then, at this time, the board will consider items seven through ten.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, next, under the county attorney, we have eleven, which is appropriation adjustment. Twelve is official appointments and oaths of office. And thirteen through fifteen are grant funds from Arizona Criminal Justice Commission and the Arizona Auto Theft Authority. Board will now consider items eleven through fifteen.
Move to approve items eleven through fifteen, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes. Under the sheriff, we have sixteen donations, seventeen additions to the fleet of speed data collection trailers. We have eighteen funds from the Office of National Drug Control Policy. Nineteen through twenty-one are IGAs with Yavapai County, the City of Surprise, and the City of Avondale. And twenty-two is to amend a modification number three to the operating and financial plan with the U.S. Department of Agriculture Forest Service Tonto National Forest. Board will now consider items sixteen through twenty-two.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Under the school superintendent, we have twenty-three, which is a request for cash deficit school district levies. Under justice courts, twenty-four, which is to amend an agreement with Eighteen Thirty-seven Property LLC. Under Superior Court, twenty-five is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds. And under the assistant county manager, we have twenty-six resignations and appointments to the Ryan White Planning Council. And twenty-seven, to amend the Ryan White Planning Council bylaws. Board will now consider items twenty-three through twenty-seven.
Move to approve items twenty-three through twenty-seven.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Under air quality, we have twenty-eight, which is to amend an agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency. Twenty-nine through thirty are agreements with U.S. Department of Homeland Security and U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Thirty-one is a withdrawal of Clean Air Act Section 111d plan. Under Animal Care and Control, we heard from them earlier, thirty-two and thirty-three New Hope agreements. And thirty-four and thirty-five IGAs with the town of Guadalupe and the city of Tolleson. The board will now consider items twenty-eight through thirty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items twenty-eight through thirty-five.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, motion passes. More, under the Animal Care and Control, we have thirty-six through thirty-nine, which is to amend New Hope agreements and IGAs with Santan Animal Rescue, Inc., the Verde Valley Humane Society, City of Goodyear, and the City of Tempe. Forty is a kennel permit. Forty-one through forty-seven are donations. Forty-eight is the Jody A. Caso Irrevocable Trust. And forty-nine is an increase to the nonrecurring expenditure authority. The board will now consider items thirty-six through forty-nine.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes. Under the budget office, we have fifty, which is budget adjustment for the Pay for Performance Pay Plan. Fifty-one and fifty-three have been withdrawn by the department, as was mentioned by the clerk earlier. Fifty-four is an MOU with Magellan Complete Car of Arizona, Inc. Under Enterprise Technology, we have fifty-five, which is to amend the license with Iron Mountain Data Centers LLC. And under finance, we have fifty-six, fund transfers warrants. Fifty-seven, capital lease documents. Fifty-eight, resolution for declaration of official intent. So the board will now consider items fifty and fifty-four through fifty-eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items number fifty, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Gallardo. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Under human resources, fifty-nine and sixty are personnel agendas for Maricopa County and for judicial branch. Sixty-one are market ranges. And sixty-two is employee discount vendor donation. The board will now consider items fifty-nine through sixty-two.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes. Next, we have human services. And this sixty-three, we've got another resolution. This is a resolution authorizing data sharing, collaboration, and exploration of East Valley regional solutions. And madam clerk, would you be willing to read this resolution for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas the City of Apache Junction, City of Chandler, Town of Gilbert, City of Mesa, City of Scottsdale, City of Tempe, Maricopa County, and the Maricopa Regional Continuum of Care Governing Board recognize that homelessness is a humanitarian challenge impacting households with and without housing in all jurisdictions. And whereas the number of persons experiencing unsheltered homelessness in the Maricopa region has increased between 2014 and 2018 and is a concern in the region, and whereas the aforementioned jurisdictions agree that an array of resources and interventions, including but not limited to housing for all incomes, homelessness prevention and diversion, assertive outreach, emergency lodging, transitional and bridge housing, and permanent supportive housing, are required to maintain a system in which homelessness is rare, one-time, and nonrecurring. And whereas the aforementioned jurisdictions have come together to explore the potential benefits of collaborating to develop regional solutions that might build on the unique capacities of each jurisdiction and create economies of scale, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Maricopa County as follows. The county manager or her designee is encouraged to do the following: to continue working collaboratively with the aforementioned jurisdictions for the exploration of East Valley regional solutions; to research best practices and investigate evidence-based approaches in multi-jurisdictional strategies to prevent and reduce homelessness; to share data and analysis amongst jurisdictions for planning purposes unless otherwise prohibited by law; to pursue the development of a portfolio of regional strategies and solutions for consideration by each individual jurisdiction; to work together to explore opportunities for a balanced portfolio of housing for all incomes and levels of support; to ensure the planning process includes opportunities for public participation and input; and that any further agreements among participating jurisdictions will be entered into in compliance with Arizona law.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And I see that Bruce Leggett is here from Human Services. Bruce, would you like to join us and say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow supervisors. The number of homeless has been increasing in Maricopa County. The last point-in-time count in January showed there were 6,600 individuals homeless. Many of us believe this count is understated. Two thousand two six hundred, two thousand six hundred of them were unsheltered homeless out in the streets. Homelessness is a regional issue. It's not confined by the boundaries of any one city or community. And the point-in-time count also showed that there's increasing suburban homelessness growth, particularly shown in Mesa, Tempe, and in the West Valley in Glendale. No single entity is responsible for or has the resources to address all these issues. It takes a coordinated effort. And to realize the vision where homelessness is rare, and if it occurs, nonrecurring, it takes a whole array of strategies, from prevention to diversion to shelter to housing. It's a complicated issue. In terms of the resolution, the East Valley city managers have been meeting since late 2017. The county has been actively participating with that group and still does. And we've been looking at kind of understanding the problem. It's got many dimensions. It's got a public safety dimension to it. It's got a humanitarian. It's got a housing issue tied in with that. And so we've been looking at best practices in the group. This resolution's important because I think it codifies, it makes formal the desire of elected officials to have us to continue to work together on solutions and provides for public input. So we are also actively participating in the West Valley in terms of working with those cities and towns. But clearly, with a partnership, that's the best way to use our limited resources to address this complex issue. Here in Maricopa County, we're gonna spend this year over $2.1 million on an array of strategies. And we expect to assist 2,200 people this coming year with funding from the county and with federal funds that we use. So in addition to continuing to provide the support we have in communities throughout the county, this year, we've got some new components. We've provided $100,000 for a new diversion program that will be available countywide to assist people, often connecting them with families or friends, and giving them some one-time assistance so that we can end their homelessness without going into shelter and long-term issues. We also are making a special effort to connect our workforce programs, to get these people in housing and getting connected to jobs so that they can become self-supporting. So a lot of our emphasis over the past three years has been to address the growth of homelessness outside of downtown Phoenix, in the whole county. So I look forward to working under Joy's direction with the East Valley cities as we continue to pursue this really complicated issue. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call out Rachel Milney, our Assistant Director for Housing and Community Development, and Scott Hall, our homeless project managers, who do excellent work on behalf of the county.
Wonderful. Well, thanks to all of you for the great work you do on homelessness. Very happy and encouraged that we've got this resolution before the board today. Mr. Vice Chairman?
A question for Bruce. So Bruce, you touched on the West Valley. And I think every, for the last two years, every time I meet with a mayor, quite often, every time I meet with a mayor, they touch on the homelessness issue. It is, it is growing, not just in the East Valley, but the West Valley. Do you see, is this just the East Valley getting together a little bit above the curve on their discussions so that we're able to do something like this for the East Valley? Or is the West Valley going to try to put something like this as well together?
I think it is a matter that the East Valley kind of started first and wanted to take a more formal approach. I think the West Valley's been more ad hoc, so I'm not aware of any discussions yet to try to have this kind of a resolution. But we're in regular weekly contact with all the cities on housing issues and on homelessness in the West Valley.
Is there a state component to this, too?
Good question.
I mean, I mean...
We hear nothing about the state, so I'm waiting.
So then also, you know, our homeless campus is in Phoenix, and Phoenix has an east side, too. I'm just wondering, are they, are both of those entities involved in these types of discussions? Because I know how much money we're putting as a county towards the issue. I just didn't know if the state also is bringing some vision and funds towards this.
To the state. I think the state has done a good job of providing funding. Certainly all our activities around when we were closing down the temporary overflow shelter and putting money into permanent housing, the state was absolutely there. I'm encouraged that the legislature put more money in the housing trust fund this year. Some of it targeted to people with serious mental illness, and others will be coming out with a request for proposal. So the amount of money was increased, and it's gonna move forward. Phoenix has been involved and has been attending the East Valley city manager meetings, so they've been active. But certainly, I think a lot of the staff work that's getting done has primarily been from Tempe, Mesa, and Chandler. They've been kind of taking the staffing lead.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve, but I have a few comments as well. And Mr. Hickman is right on. So this is such a multifaceted issue. And you remember last year as chairman, this is something that's really near and dear to me in that the excellent work that Bruce and your team has done has, I think, brought us so far along to ending homelessness. But it's something that's so difficult to wrap your arms around because of the multifaceted nature of it. Our human services campus has probably done a 360 a few different times with, we were just a homeless shelter, right? And then we became to offer significant medical services that then even got more deep as to the types of medical services we were providing people. So right now, we're working with Bruce to try and increase the bed count. We have the capacity to have folks sleeping in beds on our humans, in our human services campus. However, we still have some folks that are sleeping on the floor. San Vincent de Paul, as you all know, has been, has been great to us in recent years. And we're working with Phoenix to say, hey, can you give us the capacity to allow these beds to be slept in? Because how can someone who's homeless sleep on the floor and get up the next morning with pride and say, I'm gonna go find a job? So I think we've got two different types of homelessness right now that we can really make a difference on. Number one is folks that have just unfortunately walked in between the raindrops over past years and they're homeless. We can put them back to work and be successful in our society. Then we have another group of folks that sadly have mental health issues. And we're doing, I think, a better, far better in the past 24 months in treating those people to try and help them the best we can. So the East Valley stepped up because they had to, and they should. I think the West Side is probably the same, same way. However, Phoenix, and I'm gonna defend Phoenix here in a way, that they keep saying, just because it's us, you can't, you know, we're the central part of this Maricopa County, you can't keep pushing people to our city. And they're absolutely right. The converse of that is, you can't be the fastest-growing city in the nation and say, you know, homelessness isn't our problem. So I'm hopeful that this resolution will not necessarily begin the dialogue, but continue the dialogue from a microphone to a bullhorn and say, we have to work together, all the East Valley, the West Valley, and Phoenix, if we're truly gonna make a dent in this. And with the outrageous growth we're experiencing here in Maricopa County, some more people are gonna become homeless. So I think this is wonderful in the sense of really moving the needle in the direction it needs to go. But I think it would be helpful for all of us to reach out to Phoenix right now. And I had a conversation with the mayor's chief of staff just a few days ago, and she said, Steve, it's all of our issue. And I said, I get it. And I think this speaks to that. But if, on the West Side, if there's some cities, one I heard said, you know, we'll just, they had an ordinance of some kind that said, we'll just send them to Phoenix. That's not the way to go. And I'm not even sure if that's accurate. But we have to have more of a collaboration if we're truly going to make something positive happen. Sorry to be so long-winded, but I think it's important to have that.
Important issue. Any Supervisor Sellers?
Chairman, I'd like a second with a comment.
Please.
I really appreciate the work that the East Valley is doing now on this. But I'm also pleased that the Maricopa Association of Governments is making an effort to bring awareness up on this issue for our whole region. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may. And Bruce and your whole team have just done a remarkable job in this area. I mean, you all have a lot under your umbrella, but in this particular, and you do a great job on all of it, but in this particular area, you all are definitely champions on. And couldn't be more, more thrilled on the work that we're doing. And it's because of your team. But Bruce was being a little nice to the state. I'm not gonna be as nice to the state. They have done some good stuff, but they can do more. They can take a leadership role in really making sure that we have collaboration. And again, it's not just Maricopa County. Pima County has it. You can see it in Yuma County. It's statewide. And you see it not, it's nationally. You see families just, just living out of their cars. But the state can take a stronger role. And, and I mean, I'd be the first one to shame on, on me. You know, my, the twelve years or so I was in the legislature, I look back and say, so what did we do around homelessness? And here's, you know, my public shaming is, I don't remember really anything. I think we did the lottery thing where we added a bucket back in like 2007 to help the lottery. But in terms of the legislature, I think they can do much more.
Yeah.
But in terms of the legislature, I think they can do much more in really bringing people together, to really start looking at a regional approach. How can the state really take a leadership role? And I would really encourage the State of Arizona to do so. And I would encourage my colleagues there at the legislature as well, that they step up and really do more in terms, I mean, there's a lot going on, I get it, but this is so critical. And just a quick note, and this is, this just happened two weeks ago. We just completed our, our water days at the park, and every event we do, there is one or two families that are homeless that show up, they're there trying to get services. Holiday Park, there was a, what, a nine-year-old boy, David? A nine-year-old boy or so, eight or nine years old, comes to the table. He's talking to one of the school district's representatives, and they're, you know, giving little gadgets and gadgets out to the kids. And they asked the young one, says, where do you live? And his response was, I live in a car. And she was trying to ask, like, which, which school do you live nearby? And his response was, I live in a car. And this is, this is across Maricopa County. So yes, this is great. I can, I think we need to continue to support these types of methods of collaborating and having this type of discussion. But we do have cities in my, in my supervisor district, too. We have cities that, you know, it's not my issue, and they don't want to get involved. They don't want to be able to, to be part of that solution and that discussion. And I, you know, I get it, times are tough, and everyone's trying to tighten their belts in terms of their finances at their municipalities, but they need to step up. They need to be part of the discussion. They need to look at what they can do in their cities, and, and the state needs to step up as well. They can take a leadership role in many of these cities that refuse to participate. And I have a list, and I bet we can compare them, and they're probably similar, of those cities that aren't wanting to participate. So how do we, how do we get them to the table? And I think the legislature and our governor's office can take a leadership role in making sure that we have a regional discussion around it. So thank you, Bruce, for the work you've done, and, and I look forward to supporting the motion.
Great. Well, thanks to all my colleagues for your comments and your leadership on this issue. This resolution today is a recommitment by this board to this issue. And ever since I've been here, there's been a commitment by the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors that homelessness is a serious issue in this county and that we're ready to partner and put the resources behind this issue. You know, I had the, the privilege of serving on the Phoenix City Council, and I represented Sunny Slope, as I do now. And Sunny Slope takes on a very heavy burden of homeless individuals in the community as well as other parts of the city of Phoenix. So frankly, I'm really pleased to see other communities in the county stepping up to work alongside Maricopa County and the city of Phoenix. And thanks to everyone here on this dais who's been a part of this. And again, we're, we're all committed to this because, I mean, this issue comes up at nearly every public meeting that I'm at, every meeting I hold in the community. People want to know what we're doing about homelessness because it is this irony that we have this great economy, and as Supervisor Chukri said, you know, fastest-growing county in the country, but at the same time homelessness is getting worse. It's a byproduct, in fact, of our success. And so it's incumbent upon all of us to be committed and recommitted. And thanks, Bruce, to you and your team for all you're doing every day. So we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. We're going to continue with Human Services. We have 64 through 65, which are grant funds from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. 66 is in agreement with Arizona Public Service. 67 is a consent to transfer property from Catholic Charities Community Services, Inc. to Housing for Hope, I L L C. 68 is an agreement with the Arizona Department of Education. And 69 through 76 are to amend agreements and I G As with Maricopa County Community College District, Queen Creek Unified School District, Chandler Unified School District, Tempe Elementary School District, Scottsdale Unified School District, Higley Unified School District, Mesa Unified School District, and the Kyrene School District. The board will now consider items 64 through 76.
I think you named every school district in the, in the state.
Yeah.
I'll let you go ahead, and I'll second your motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, along with a comment. I had the privilege of visiting a Head Start program in Chandler and reading a story to a class there, and I was really impressed what an effective piece of our early education efforts this program provides. And I want to thank Bruce Liggett and his team for all the great work they're doing in serving the children. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments, and thanks for the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, under Parks and Recreation, we have 77 donations, 78 addition of vehicle to fleet, 79 is amend agreement with K C C M Enterprises, Inc. And then under Procurement Services, we have 80 IT consulting services, 81 agenda management software and associated services, 82 is an agreement with Communities Program Management, L L C, and 83 is the West Court's grand jury space. The board will now consider items 77 through 83.
Move to approve items 77 through 83, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes. Now, under Public Health, we have 84, which is an agreement with Creighton University. 85 through 92 is men contracts, I G As, and agreements with Southwest Human Development, Arizona Early Childhood Education Association, the Arizona Board of Regents for Arizona State University, Dignity Community Care, Peoria Unified School District, Arizona Department of Health Services, and Share Our Strength, Inc. And 93 through 97 are business associate agreements. Board will now consider items 84 through 97.
Motion to approve with a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please proceed.
On item number 84 with Creighton University, I had the pleasure a few weeks ago to meet with Father Hendrickson, who is a Jesuit priest and the president of the university. And I, it's fascinating to me, to become a Jesuit priest, it takes almost 13 to 15 years. And on top of it, he has a PhD. I still said I was smarter than him and holier, but he didn't, he didn't concur. But he's just a fascinating and just an honorable gentleman who plans to come to Arizona quite a bit as their, as their health school gets developed, and I'm excited to have them here. It's not my district, of course, it's in Mr. Gallardo's district, but I think it's going to be great to have Creighton as one of our first Catholic universities here in the state, and actually only one of three Catholic medical schools in the country, as I understand it.
Well, thank you for those comments, and I agree, it's a, it's a great addition to Maricopa County and is going to lead to a lot of economic development along that, the midtown area. So we do have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Continuing, the motion passes. Continuing under Public Health, we have 98 through 100, which is renewal agreement to, sorry, renewal amendment to agreements and contracts with AZ Early Childhood Development and Health Board. 101 through 104 is renewal of grant awards in agreement with AZ Early Childhood Development and Health Board. 105 is a notice of award with the Department of Health and Human Services. 106 is agreement with Sonoran Prevention Works. 107 is an I G A with the Arizona Department of Health Services. 108 is to rescind previous action and approve purchase order to HIV Surveillance I G A. And 109 through 112 is purchase orders for I G As and contracts with A D H S. The board will now consider items 98 through 112.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Under Real Estate, we have 113, which is to amend the agreement with C T I Towers Assets, II L L C. And 114 is a special land use permit with the Arizona State Land Department. Board will now consider items 113 through 114.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, really quickly, on the hep A that we just voted on-
Yes.
Our, our team did great on that. We, I mean, really, they did a fabulous job, so I want to give them kudos, too.
Absolutely. And to move so quickly on a very, very important public health issue. Thank you. Under Real Estate, 115 is Arizona Public Service Grant of Utility Easement. This item does require a unanimous roll call vote. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 115, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers?
Aye.
Supervisor Chukri?
Aye.
Supervisor Hickman?
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
Chairman Gates?
Aye. And that motion does pass unanimously. And next, under Transportation, 116 through 119, we have I G As and contracts with the Gila River Indian Community, Entonte, Town of Queen Creek, Town of Gilbert, and TriStar Engineering and Management, Inc. 120 is amend action to establish county policy for bridge system. 121 is a sale of a portion of Perryville roadway alignment. And 122 and 123 are annexations by the city of Glendale and the town of Queen Creek. 124 is easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. Board will now consider items 116 through 124.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Under the Board of Supervisors, we have 125 and 126, which are reappointments to Community Development Advisory Committee and the Arizona Diamondbacks Foundation Board of Directors. 127 is a resignation from the Board of Health. And under the Industrial Development Authority, 128 is a resolution approving issuance of bonds for the benefit of Arizona Autism Charter Schools, Inc. The board will now consider items 125 through 128.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank my designee under the Board of Health, Henry, for his great service.
Thank you. And as the, as the board's designee on the Board of Health, I would agree and very appreciative of his efforts as well. So we have a motion. How about a second?
Second.
All right? Oh.
I was going to say second, and I appreciate, I very much appreciate my sister, Sharman, for going on the C D Act. I don't know if that's a conflict, but it's really a good way of getting rid of her out of the office and doing something great for the community. Okay.
You meant that in a very loving way.
That's right, yeah.
She's a little sister. She's not an older sister. I don't have to treat her with respect.
All right. Well, with that, we-
Yo, come on, lighten up.
We don't take that funny.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously, and we are grateful for everyone's service. All right, under setting of-
Especially Hickman's-
That's right, yeah, exactly. Under setting of hearings, we have clerk of the board, 129 Bingo License Application. 130 Proposed Nancy K Irrigation Water Delivery District. Under Planning and Development, 131 Planning and Zoning Cases. Under Transportation, 132 through 159 Road Files is listed on the agenda, and 152 is Patent Easement Abandonment. The board will now consider items 129 through 152.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now we go to the Consent Agenda. 153 Appointments, 154 Annual Permitting Report, 155 Donations, 156 Duplicate Warrants, 157 Head Start Monthly Report, 158 Minutes, 159 Stale Dated Warrants, 160 Secured and Unsecured Tax Rule Corrections, 161 Property Reclassification Appeals for Approvals. We're getting, we're getting into some high numbers here today. The board will now consider items 153 through 161.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Consent Agenda Continued, 162 Civil Penalty Appeals, 163 Tax Abatements, 164 Treasures Collections and Investment Report, 165 Settlement Resolution of Property Tax Cases and Claims, 166 Redemption of Waivers for Individuals and Organizational Exemptions, 167 Precinct Committee Men. The board will now consider items 162 through 167.
Move to approve items 162 through 167.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Now we move to the addendum. Under the County Recorder, we have A1, which is the Chief Deputy Recorder Salary Adjustment. And under County Attorney, we have A3, which is Moon Dance Funding, L L C, and Brian Stumpf. The board will now consider items, addendum items, A1 and A3.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items A1 and A3.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. And on the next two addendum items, I will be recusing myself for potential conflict. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Just like a block. Sorry. Okay. County Attorney, items A2 and A4, do I hear a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
What's that?
Steve.
And you did. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing done, motion carries, and we will invite the chairman back.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chairman. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to recess as the Board of Supervisors and will convene as the Improvement District Board of Directors for item I1, which is minutes. The board will now consider item I1.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you for the motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?[1627.91] Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes. Now we're going to adjourn as the Improvement District Board of Directors, and we will convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors, and of course, with the rain last night, and maybe more on the way, it sure feels like there's going to be, as always, we're so grateful for the great work that the Flood Control District does. F1 is a resolution to disclaim interest in easement conveyed and authorize acceptance of amended and restated easement. F2, resolution amendment for small project assistance program. F3, a change order to contract for on-call dam safety geotechnical services. F4, on-call services contract for metro area drainage master study plan update. F5, minutes. F6, personnel agenda. F7, budget adjustment for pay-for-performance pay plan. And F8, easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. Board will now consider items F1 through F8.
Move to approve items F1 through F8, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman.
Second.
And thank you, Supervisor Chukri. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously, and now we will adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors, and thank you so much to the Library District for all they did to keep everybody busy over the summer, the kids, and the great, great reading programs. We'll go to L1, donation reports from June of 2019. L2, minutes. L3, personnel agenda. L4, donations from the friends of the Queen Creek Library. And L5, amend license with Iron Mountain LLC. The board will now consider items L1 through L5.
So moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes. And now we will adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and this is the time in our meeting where we have public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone here for public comment?
I have no slips this morning, sir.
All right, okay, well, thank you, thank you very much. This is also the time when everyone up here on the dais has the opportunity to give any comments on things that are going on of importance to them. I'll start with our county manager, Joy Rich. All right, thank you, Joy. Supervisor Sellers?
Been a busy month. I attended the 60th Anniversary Celebration Summit of the Arizona-Mexico Commission, which is chaired by Governor Doug Ducey, and was attended by many legislators from Arizona, as well as from the state of Sonora, Mexico. Along with Supervisor Gallardo, I attended the National Association of Counties National Convention in Las Vegas, and during the convention, I had the opportunity to visit their Regional Transportation Commission to see firsthand how another fast-growing county is using innovative technology to help deal with major traffic issues. And I always learned something new from these experiences, but it made me even more appreciative of all the technology our Maricopa County Department of Transportation is already working on to make cost-effective improvements. I was a speaker at a welcome luncheon along with Scottsdale Vice Mayor Clapp for a longtime friend, the Vice Mayor of Tuchan, Taiwan, Bruce Langau, and I chaired the State Transportation Board Meeting in Cottonwood last week, and we've started meetings here with municipalities to make plans for the extension of our transportation funding proposition 400 in Maricopa County. This is really an important plan for the fastest-growing county in the U.S., and especially with our rapidly changing transportation world, so it's been a busy month.
Great, well, thanks for that report, and thanks to you and Supervisor Gallardo for representing Maricopa County so ably at the NACO meeting. Supervisor Gallardo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this past July, we completed what we're, I guess, calling our second annual Water Days at the Park, where we partnered up with the city of Phoenix and many of the departments and programs that are provided not only by the county but the city. Bruce and his entire staff had helped to make it possible. We had, oh, besides Phoenix and Maricopa County, we had Mexican Consulance Office, we had United Way, we had, who else did we have? We had all the school districts, Phoenix Union and the various elementary districts. We had, who else did we have? We had the Census numbers there, the Census folks, we had legal services there, so the whole thought was, you had so many programs and departments out there that provide services to our community, our nonprofit organizations, and how do we connect these families to these programs? So we have these Water Days at the Park, and we barbecue and have fun, and we've doubled probably the number that we had last year, and these are the types of events that continue to grow, and I would anticipate next year, we're going to be even larger, so thank you for David. David did an excellent job, and it was his first, just hit the ground running, huh, brother? But he got in there, and he helped organize, and we had great events throughout the month of July, so thank you to Bruce and David and everyone else that helped participate.
Thank you, sounds like a great event. Supervisor Chukri?
I just want to say something that recently happened, that we saw just a few days ago, and that's our new effort as a county to recruit talent to our workforce. Enjoy, you know, I'm like a kid in a candy store, when I see something I like, I keep talking about it, so I don't want to drone on too much, but Wyatt and your team and everyone else, if you haven't seen it, the video they put together and the recruitment and the thought that went into it, I think is probably one of the highlights I've seen in my seven years here. It was exceptionally done, and it is an embodiment of everything we've been trying to do the past seven years, and that is bring a business mindset to this county, and it really, I think, was clever, great, and just many, many compliments to you and your team on that, Joy.
Thank you for those comments, I couldn't agree more. Supervisor Hickman?
Thanks for bringing that up, Steve, and I know that you're a slave to marketing, so that was really nice, and it did that sizzle reel. Really, I would think, when people see that, are going to entice people to come to work for the county, but also hopefully jazz up the people that have jobs here to feel a little bit more emboldened again about the team spirit that Maricopa County displays, so thank you for that, that was great. A great month for me because family, friends, vacations, it's great to be back and get going again with county business, it's like we never left, but it's great to see you guys. I'll just talk about one trip that occurred in July, and I wanted to thank Cindy. I went up to Agila and utilized, got to see what that little library is doing for that community, and the kids learning about robotics, and it was just really sweet, and it was done in front of some large business people. Freeport-Mackinac had me come down there to come and take a look at their land, as well as witnessing the Matory melon operation that makes all the watermelons and cantaloupes and doing different genetic things with the cantaloupes to entice people from, you know, we send this stuff out across the world, and as well as New York City, and it was really nice. But I was also able to go back to the library and meet with some residents of four-paw about a P&amp;Z issue that might be coming up soon, and talk to them, and it's great to have a community meeting that could have swollen out of control, but being in a library where there was a librarian telling us to shut up was really cool. And Jen Pokorski, is Jen here? Jen, through that meeting with these four-paw people, the county scored extremely high marks as they called and talked to you and Darren about this issue that's way, way on the front end, they said just how well, proper, and professional they're treated even at this stage, so please tell your people, thank you for that, and Darren, thank you for treating them nicely, because it's great to sit there and say, wow, you guys have it together, so thank you for that. So that's what I've got.
Wonderful, thanks so much. Yeah, great to have everybody back, thanks for all the hard work people have been doing over the last month or so. I had the opportunity last week to go up to Flagstaff, I was invited to go up to the Arizona Manufacturers Council, they were doing their environmental summit, and so Amanda Reeve and Steve Tressel invited me up to tell the story about Maricopa County air quality and all the great work that has been done, and really had great response, a lot of wonderful comments from people from industry, from the environmental side, complimenting our air quality department, and that they've been great partners, and again, the approach that was started by Supervisor Chukri, Supervisor Barney, and then has been followed by Supervisor Hickman and others of working with industry, and rejecting the concept that there's a zero-sum game between economic development and clean air. You can do both, Maricopa County has proven that, and I was just very proud to have the opportunity to represent Maricopa County at this event, and also very pleased to see the day before I went up there, that's when that rainstorm parked on top of the museum fire, and even worse disaster was averted, so a lot of people's prayers were answered up there, and a lot of great work was obviously been done by the firefighters up there. So with that, this meeting is adjourned, but invite my colleagues to join me upstairs. Thanks so much.